Let's get this party started, okay. We will start with the Arts Commission presentation.
I think most of you know me, Steve Brady, you're in Germany, he and our first commission and we've got at least one first commission person here and she's actually going to make the presentation, but I just have to say we're pretty excited. What's going to be presented to you this evening is kind of the first possible acquisition of I think the art and it's moving part. And I passed around that little brochure, it's called Wind Sculptor. And I think that Eddie Havener is going to make a presentation. He's going to provide the details and afterwards if you have questions, which I mean you will have, we'll come to answer.
Thank you. Any, any Steve? All right, so you know some little handouts. Um, maybe what I'll do is I will start here with Ashley. I only printed them out like three times, and it's like, oh no, I gotta add this. Okay, so there is a bunch, start with the top ones, see the ones that have the little pictures and wind sculptures themselves. Um, I think Steve, in one of our meetings, you mentioned that, you know, no matter which of these sculptures that anyone picks, they're all winners, they're all beautiful. Um, and even in our little Arts Commission, we did work on like trying to like, oh, how are we gonna reduce the collection? Did everybody make a few votes and it was all over the map? So in an effort to appeal to the greatest public audience, simplicity and elegance for you to reduce the often down to and um, and then we decided as a uh, uh, commission that we needed also three locations that would be potential appealing locations. So um, let's see, uh, let's see, Kathy, I'm gonna have you um, start with those, so still moving ones.
With the videos?
Yeah, with the video, so, so these sculptures, you've got little snapshots in your presentation papers. But they are quite distinctive when they're moving, so I sent links to Kathy and she'll bring them up one at a time. Cause ultimately what um, within our discussions with Mayor DePinto in August, September was that he felt that this particular art feature, um, we wouldn't necessarily have to have the community vote, but that we could use our city capital as our representatives to vote for us. And so that's what we decided, we bring three options for you folks and three locations so that you guys could reduce it now, so.
First one was pretty good. I can see the most important two.
So you've got my latest uh, link, right? I sent them directly um, in some of my latest emails, Kathy, where it was like, here's this one specifically.
This is the first link on the email that you sent today.
So you, okay, okay, so sure, stay here. So you can, you can bring this one up, if you just click it once, it will make that one highlighted. And you can send for it. So this is how these things move, they are made in copper coloring and also stainless steel. And we're just gonna look at copper coloring just because it's really quite elegant and beautiful. You send your back button back. And go down one. This one here, single click to take a look at how that one moves. This here, you know, the shapes are, uh, I would say just very much part of parts of nature. This could be the top of a grain seed head, I mean, they incorporate the wind like a prairie has wind. And then if you go back again, one. The third one, it's gonna be down lower. Keep going. Many of these things, try not to look at too many of them, they get overwhelmed, okay, we're looking for one called Ponderosa that maybe sneak up a bit.
No, sorry. It looks like that.
There it is, okay. So this one is a simple representation of a tree. So there you've been able to take a look at how they move. And then um, on the other link I sent, which had the word document with photos, it's gonna just show the blow up of these locations and um, so the three locations that we thought that would be on public property and opportunity sites are along the curving new pathway in a park. Where you know, that could be a mini destination for kids with parents or walking their pets or however. Um. Working on that. Uh, no, so it's an actual attachment, a word document.
Oh, the word document, I thought you wanted the next video.
No, no, videos are done. So um, here we have the, the pathway, it's got those nice wobbles, you know, one of those little wobbles could be a, a location place like here specifically could be a location for one of those wind features. This here is a wagon wheel trailhead and it, we would need to put a four inch diameter hole through the concrete there. Um, and Cody can elaborate on that, but we'll get there, but nevertheless, this here is um, a nice location, uh, adjacent to five oh seven. And this is that clock tower building where there's a variety of uh, medical professional studios in there. And then the third location is also a trailhead that is across from Timberland Bank by the wagon wheel. And it was, and it's also complementing the entrance like Yellman Avenue. Um, so we are, as an Arts Commission, we'd like to put the vote of which one of these things and which location to our council members. To give you a little bit more um, information on the little spreadsheet, you can bring that one up, Kathy. Uh, we, we showed um, the general cost for capital purchasing of these things. And we're all, with all of them, we're trying to make them around thirteen to fourteen feet high, because we're kind of limit the, the possibility of vandalism. And they um, range from four thousand to forty six hundred dollars, um, with a nine point five percent sales tax. The double dancer will just cross over into the five thousand thirty seven dollar cost. And the other ones are forty three eighty and forty seven sixty three, so they're kind of all in the ballpark.
Heidi, Sophie, is this the one you wanted, the one that you handed out to council members?
Yeah, correct, yeah, so that our uh, public viewers can also take a look at it. So um, um, and, and the, and we know because we're uh, Washington state for it to be purchased even in Oregon, we are gonna have some kind of sales tax, so we know that's a fact. The shipping cost, um, Steve did some work on that and he said we had it to direct Yellman, we would have a ten percent cost on top of things. However, um, Steve is willing to volunteer for a pickup in Oregon, which would eliminate that, so.
Just a slight verification, when he said it would be ten percent of the cost, that's shipping from where these things are fabricated in Utah. And uh, the gallery we're working with, as she will point out, is actually Lincoln City, Oregon, the closest gallery that handles it. And uh, so if we go to Lincoln City, there would be no shipping.
Yeah, so that would be kind of a, a good road trip for this, our volunteer called Steve.
Steve, you want to, you down to pick that up, Kathy? They could save some money.
Yeah, and then um, we had our city representatives in the commission ask us to check in with Public Works to just make sure that all these locations were viable, that they didn't have hidden undergrounds, underground utilities that might, you know, or limit the ability to put them there and Cody, are you? Oh, very, very great, so we had an email exchange and he said they're all viable locations. So you did uh, emphasize that, you know, there would be some equipment rental and fill material, especially for the concrete ones. And I, you said no, no more than a thousand for those things, although that isn't factoring in your labor for the grassy parks. When you said labor would be more, but surely there wouldn't be the same kind of rental, but there would be, you know, a variety of things. So I just kind of cut that price in half, it's a little bit um, guesstimate on those kind of things, but uh, anyway, we're hoping that the city council will make a choice for the beauty of the city. Um, I don't think there's any option that you guys can, that we can lose on in terms of effect, because maybe down the road, we'll actually put another one at the next wagon wheel or in the park. So I don't know how you guys want to deliberate, if you need to take time to take it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that, if you have any question, that's everything I pretty much have to say.
Yeah, um, so likely we'll have council last questions, um, discuss it real quick right now. And then um, added later um, city council, because we don't make actual decisions here, we'll um, we'll take a vote on which one to fund and all that. Um, I believe these are budgeted, correct? There already is.
So that was gonna be my question, what's the, what's the bud, what's the budget that we have already?
Ten thousand for buying for this venue, but do we have ten thousand set aside for the Arts Commission projects?
That's not the verification grant for, you know, separate each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, in reference to, because you said they were copper and you want to make sure they have certain heights to stop vandalism, uh, the durability of them. You know, with copper, I don't know, copper kind of bends very easily, you know, um.
What, I mean, it might be, it might be just a look, it might be a coating on it, maybe you could comment, Steve?
They could only stand at a hundred and forty mile an hour. She mentioned that, that they look like copper, they're actually copper. And uh, so if there's slight bending, they can actually bend to the shape, so um, maintenance is really.
I was just concerned about my kids, if somebody who accidentally runs into it.
Well, that's what Heidi was pointing out, we want to have this elevated enough that they can't reach it. Uh, not only kids, but vandal. Also, I'd like to take, you know, the community kind of resent the, my personal bias on the location, if that's okay. My bias would be to get the most look at this. And that location in the wagon wheel behind the uh, car star, I think would be ideal. It would make an immediate impression, yeah, thousands of eyes looking at it every day. Or what is it?
Yeah, I mean, no, pros and cons, already, already got a lot of busy, wonderful things in it, but you know, so, but you have a point in there.
Yeah, um, I agree with that assessment of location. They look cool windmills, the only thing my hesitation would be, I would prefer to see this made from somebody local. Either a local person or, I don't know, high school still does shop. The high school students, if they spend.
That would be.
Still a thing, I think would be a lot cooler, a lot better story than some guy, some artist somewhere being a metal thing. I mean, there's a lot of people, talented people in Yellman here that have the skill set that could build these. I would much rather see somebody local. But the location, the design, I like all that. That's my ham, I want to see somebody local doing local art.
Right.
Not just some guy from some other state that nobody knows or nobody has any connection to. You know, like, hey, this is, you know, like high su, high school students, you know, the shop class that you build or somebody. There's a lot of local artists here in Yellman around the general city, be great to have that connection to Yellman.
Just as a segue on local art, one of the other things that we are working on is to bring wraps on some of the intersection electrical boxes, which are the big six foot by six foot ones. And, and that is where we would be, you know, one place where we'd be soliciting for local artists to be selected in a kind of a community voting thing on the Yellman page, so it's not like we're not addressing that, we were trying to like get a singular art piece installed to have, um, to bring some beauty, uh, yes, but I acknowledge that thought.
Well, just to comment, obviously. We're gonna talk on amateur elder here, these are complicated and uh, all of these things have to be extremely balanced. And so, one good artist out here who has no background uh, in making these things, um, they're not gonna fabricate this in their, in their garage, I'll tell you that for sure.
But it hasn't, hasn't been asked, hasn't been researched, because I've seen some, I go to a lot of houses, I see some little stuff.
It can't happen.
Why can't it?
Because.
I've seen some nice windows in people's outfits that they paint.
How did they buy it? Because they own their homes, doesn't mean they necessarily need them.
I go to a lot of houses, I see a lot of things and artists' work and stuff like that and, yeah. There, there's some talent out there, they may not be famous or nothing, you know, they may not have that, but if it's not even asked, how do you know?
If these things were so easy to build, they would be built all over the place, they're not. They're built by people who have developed the technique that I am, the wherewithal to be able to do it. This isn't something you do in your backyard or in a shop here uh, in Yellman. It would be great if that could happen, but.
Yeah, I, I think what Steve's trying to say is there is a lot of technical expertise that come to building these and not necessarily.
I don't disagree with that.
If there's someone in Yellman that could do it, we'd absolutely do it, right, Steve, if there is someone in Yellman? Um, through either Yell.
Well, even if there is no one.
Oh.
Or I'm like, well, if you don't ask, how do you know?
Sure. Point, good point. Yeah. No, good point, I, I don't disagree with either side, I think they're very complicated, I also think that it would be good to have it local, if there's somebody.
If you can do it local, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. James, you had something, you had your hand there.
No, no question.
Okay.
Steve, these designs would likely be patented as well, right? These are the designs that belong to the company, so, yeah, so we can't just like have somebody make one that looks just like this, so, you know, I agree with you.
He was saying that, yeah, he was saying just something that's similar.
It'd be similar, yeah, I've seen similar designs.
Anyway, if we have one up and somebody drives by and say, hey, I can do that, go for it, we'll take more than once, yeah.
I mean, so you know, we are focusing on local art in some of the aspects that we're doing, but we were all, you know, in all the conversations that have been probably up till two years now that, you know, these have been a, a popular item in our Arts Commission to at least, you know, arrive at installing one beautiful piece of artwork that could complement the city and uh, you know, um, and to be able to execute it without a lot of uh, you know, more time involved.
Is there one that the council seems to be leaning towards?
I have a quick question, um. What led you guys to this specific artist? How many others were considered? And.
Maybe I can.
Yes, please.
It's not the specific artist, it's the art. There aren't many people around who make this kind of art and uh, uh, just to give you um, kind of the back story here. The artist uh, actually advocates these, as I mentioned in Utah, okay, so he selects galleries um, across the United States and there are only a handful of uh, selected galleries that, that feature these um, these wind sculptors. Now, I discovered them because I make an annual tract to dig in the art scene in Santa Fe. And uh, as it turns out, uh, you're not going to buy these from the fabricator in Utah. It's all through the galleries, so the closest gallery uh, is uh, like I said, it's in Lincoln City, uh, Oregon and uh, you're not gonna find somebody, I haven't heard of anybody necessarily, even in our state, who uh, to the degree of expertise and beauty are creating these things on the scale that uh, Christopher, um, Whitaker uh, is making these in Utah.
I would, me personally, speaking for anyone other than me, I would like, and I'm not saying you have it, I just wanna see. Can we try to see if there's other options out there, I'm just not saying anything down on this at all.
So more due diligence on a local.
Not even, I understand the desire for local, but I also understand building something like this in a town of ten thousand people, the likelihood of finding that caliber, I mean, not very high, totally get it. I just, can we get some other options, see what options we, we, there are. I'm not gonna believe that there's one person in the entire country that sells these, um, now, not that it's the same level, but I literally could pull up Amazon and wind sculptures and it's, they're there. Now, are they gonna be the same quality as this?
No.
Oh.
Did you get that here? No, they're not, but I just, if we could look at some options, see what different ideas are out there, what diff, different artists that are making them and what, what's available, that's just kind of what I wanna see, not just three different options from only one person.
Wha- what about the Makerspace? So I learned about the Makerspace in Lacey, where they have this huge, you guys ever heard of that? I learned about it in Steady, actually, you know what I'm talking about? So there's artists, local artists go there and apparently they have very, you know, all this equipment, it's just, it's a thought, it might be a place to actually look. They do all sorts of stuff, welding and create art stuff, anyway, yes.
I, I understand the concern of trying to find local, um, one of the things we also need to consider is, are we working for local and this is somebody who, this is their art, it's a one of a kind kind of thing, or like, while I was looking at on this website, it's that the Ponderosa, you ordered Ponderosa and there could be five people out there that own the Ponderosa, it's not. This is the one and only that's like this, and so that's one of the things that we need to also look at, that cost when it comes down to it as well as the compensation portion. As I don't, I mean, forty seven, four thousand dollars, uh, forty five hundred dollars, the average between the three. Uh, we're looking at, that's like all materials, intellectual property, all that other stuff, but it's also something that's, I hate to use the term mass produced, but it's that limited production of them. And I think it's great that we gets, get something that is art, art associated with somebody, that that is their thing. But it's, we also, because like you said, you can go on Amazon, yeah, those are mass produced, uh, stamped in China, India, somewhere out there where it's just, okay, it's a, you know, cheap copy or something, but we're getting something that is intrinsic to that whole thing and I just, yeah, you're right, um, might not be somebody here in Yellman, but maybe in Washington there. Um, we could also look at, but well, this is a wonderful start, I appreciate the work you guys have done.
I just wanted to say, as the rep to the Art Commission from the city, I have personally been in the meetings that you guys have held for months and months. And this was not a random choice, this is very well thought out, educated decision, and it's an overwhelming amount of information that we suggested we put together in a small digestible amount so that you guys could look on it, so just wanna acknowledge the work that was done for this.
Just like reducing options down to.
This was really hard, really.
And, and so throwing more variables in the mix, you know, granted that we can do some of that work and, and, and maybe it'll be some kind of different sculpture, but again, you know, broad appeal, like simplicity, elegance and design, um, and, 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 and there should be some artists in Washington that have those qualities also, that it'd be a broad hub of appeal. Um, you know, so uh, go on, Steve.
Just a little bit of a sidebar, my counterpart is chair of the Arts Commission here is Dennis Trinkbay in Rainier. He also is on the city council of uh, Rainier. And he purchased one of these personally and donated to the city, and you might want to go down there and check it out. Uh, and it's from one of these galleries that came from the fabrication uh, source in Utah.
It's not the same thing as the he's at.
No, 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 he's just saying.
It's small scale.
Yeah, it was Joseph said.
I'm just trying to, we've gotta really think and uh, presented well, how do you think you? When, when we wanna share art, when we want things to be displayed, I don't think the problem here is art. Um, I think the problem here is communication and presentation, how do you think you did a good job? What I see here is, I thought it was beautiful. As soon as I heard people talking about it with their tone and their communication skills, kind of got discouraged and thought, well, if that's all people are gonna act, then I don't really want art. So really what we gotta think is how we talk to each other and how we explain things to each other, because right now, I think the tension in the room coming from people who have thoughts that they know what art is and others don't. And so we have to really consider everybody's playing field and understanding of what is. It's one thing to influence someone, give them a suggestion, it's another to talk to somebody as if they don't know anything you're saying. I like these sculptors, but I think if we're gonna continue to grow Arts Commission and see things actually be placed in town, we've gotta learn how to communicate and influence each other in a non-condescending manner, to where we can have things get accomplished. And we can look at the art and not have bitterness, and we can look at the art and enjoy each other's company, and we can look at the art and say, huh, that's a beautiful piece, I'm just not happy about the way that it was done. I just need to say that because I'm about politic that, but there you go.
That brilliant.
Um, I just wanted to add in reference to when we are talking about the artists, the artwork, um, what I was trying to get to is, it'd be wonderful if we can get a Juhu piece, through the odds being able to get that, he's well known, he's a local artist, but his pieces are thousands and thousands of dollars, you can get somebody and go, oh yeah, I can copy that. But is that art or is it a product? And that's what, as I said, I think you did a wonderful job, this is, I, I understand where the art, this particular artist, you know, sense of why it chose that, it's not a mass produced, stamped. Uh, it's just not an object, it's somebody who has that, and I appreciate that, um. And when asked earlier, I think the Ponderosa, I'll be honest, I think that's the one that is just gorgeous and, and all, and it keeps simple with the city, the tree city of Yellman, that it's a piece that can kind of do that.
And did you tie that up?
And then in reference to, that's where I said, if I can just say, I think the trailhead by five oh three First Street, it's kind of out of the way. In other words, you're forced to have to go walk to it, but it's still close enough that you can see it. The uh, the only reason I wouldn't do the park is, that's where we wanted to have uh, Jazz Fest, a few other things, we want to make sure we're really cautious not to take up space of people laying out their blankets and all, and then the other one, just because you can drive by it, you, okay, that's pretty, you keep on going. It's not a destination kind of thing that makes sense, so that's my point, again, thank you very much, you guys, I know the hard work you've done.
Had a question.
So it says thirteen feet, five inches tall, like the double E-LX here, is that the sculpture itself, is that complete from base to tip?
It's base to tip.
Okay. Um, so how high up till that, that piece starts, do you know? Who's a, I mean, because you're saying get it, keep it up high.
It says. It says six foot extension, seven and a half. Oh, and the last one, sorry, my bad.
Or we can get three foot extension for it.
That is fine, yeah, I'll, I'll, this is kind of.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah, ten feet.
To the base.
To the base, and then so that'll be another thirteen feet.
Three and a half feet.
It looks like it's probably in the range of about six foot. If you. This is gonna be four.
Yeah, I'm just wondering from the, the top is spinning, these bottom is spinning.
Probably in the.
What that range is, you know, how, how many.
They're, they're, they gave us the width of those things, but they didn't.
Says four feet, yeah.
It's four feet wide, the height, your, your ratio, that one might be six feet high, so you know, so anyway, we can like uh, clarify that and we could also get three foot extensions at two hundred dollars additional to give it an additional, or pardon me, three, three foot, yeah, so. Three foot extensions to raise it up another three foot for two hundred dollars if it needs to go higher.
If it needs, because I mean, that, that plays into the aspect of it. You know, and our imbalance, having balance, if you got this thing super high up in the air, you have a skinny pole, it's gonna look funny, because you have a skinny pole and you have this thing way up there, you know, you don't want it to look odd because it's not ratioed correctly.
Right, so I mean.
So that's why I was kind of curious, so, it says thirteen feet, is that that, or is it from pole to tip and it's in the ground and like I said, you're up six feet and then you got six feet of art piece, so that sort of sense.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, I like the Ponderosa one, but I also think, I also appreciate what you said about local and I just threw the Makerspace out there because I do know that they have a lot of artists, it probably would just be worth, I don't know, asking. I do think that's important, but I do like the Ponderosa one.
Let, let me just comment. You're absolutely correct. There is an incredible amount of artistic in this town and he ordered to the gallery over here. There are about fifty artists who have their stuff, um, in that gallery. And, uh, uh, the commission is, is aware of it. And we aren't going to absolutely focus on local artists, uh, you know. Just weighing ourselves in town. Public art is a big deal. It adds to the community and, um. We're going to.
How does this sound council? Bring these three options forward at a, um, upcoming city council meeting. Um, with the, with another, if it's possible to, or adoption is gonna be local. What, whatever it is, whether it's not to that quality or whatever.
Washington state and that correct, right? Local, I mean, Washington state artists or are we talking Young here?
That's from across, do you wanna clarify?
I wouldn't. Graduating radius is out, you know, Young, greater Young, and then out from there, Washington state.
Yeah.
I would be a lot more happier, I mean, cause it's local art, this is local tax dollars paying for this. It's a lot. Have a lot more pride saying, hey, so and so made it that lived in town here or, you know, on the outskirts of town. You know, they're in the same department, community, you know, keeping that community is my biggest, will be my biggest. Is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why, or, or even if they don't find, I mean, I would be okay even if they don't find one, but it just do a little bit of due diligence, just.
I mean, we'll find some art, there's, it, it'll be a different style.
Of course.
Or, I mean, you know, it's gonna be.
We're, you're saying specific to win features for this project, right? That you want someone else locally that can do it, is that what you're saying?
He just wants this locally.
I would like to see a local artist, yeah. I mean, I love win features, cause I see him at the pool. You know, when they're spinning, I've seen all sorts of different ones, this way and that way, it's always men, rising to watch. But as Spain, lo- local tax dollars, let's get local artists, it can be spinning, doesn't have to be. I mean, I like watching it spinning.
I don't wanna speak for Josh, but what Josh is saying is, if we have somebody as a representative from our own hometown. Wouldn't that be something, just to look at that piece of art and say, hey, look, I'm, that, that was done here locally. That's all he's expressing. It's not a debate over who can or what can or how can or where from. He's expressing that it is the idea that it's from home.
Yep.
That's all right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Up needs and all that, no, thank you. Y and C. All right. You wanted the music, yeah.
Well, it's just the Y now, so, they don't have MCA, it's just Y, Y.
All right, so. Started seeing stuff from the lines, just a little history, um, as part of a need survey in two thousand eight from Young City Parks. Survey and, uh, they'll send out in March two thousand eight. Um, folks, we, they were asked, uh, what they show a strong preference for. And setting aside a growing land for a special use park, um, building connected trails by score out sidewalks, placing bathrooms in each of these, um. And a development of ball fields, swimming pools, community centers, parks, pedestrians, water features and gardens. Um, so, and then another one later in, uh, at the Young Home and Garden Show. Uh, from twenty fifteen, also, um, one of the biggest things was a strong desire for youth. The indoor youth recreation facilities and swimming pool, as well as strong support for more walking trails slash bicycle paths slash pedestrian walkways, sidewalks as well. For playgrounds for families and smaller children. Um, I, I just put those and this is part of an, um, Young Parks and Recreation Plan, um, from two thousand eight. And so I just bring that up though, this is a kind of a background is, obviously we've seen the need, we've heard a lot of folks recently in the past five, six, seven years, but. This has been something that's been wanted and needed in our community for a long time. Um, those were the basis in twenty fifteen when I reached out to the YMCA, the Southside YMCA. Bringing a YMCA with a swimming pool, that's, it's a non-starter without a swimming pool, and I think that, um. That's the biggest basis for bringing a YMCA in the home. There's lots of other amenities that I'm gonna talk about here in a minute, but. That's the basis of it, is bringing that swimming pool and giving the ability for children to have lessons other than going forty, forty-five minutes away. Take them when you have lots of rivers, lakes around here. And so with that said, um. They came out in twenty sixteen, we, we discussed it at that point, the YMCA. Um, one of the big concerns then was that we had to pass a, a bond before they wanted to come out here. At the same time, Shelton was also expressing a desire to have a YMCA, very similar to what we would do here, um. Long story short, we didn't pass that bond that first time, it took a couple more. Um, they were, Shelton was a little more ready, they went with them, they, they built that, it took about, I wanna say, three years. Um, to build and. I, I think the project was going to fourteen million dollars over there. We're asking, just in a recent meeting here with the exploratory committee, which council member Smith is a part of, um. It came out to eighteen million is what they project the cost would be for a YMCA in the city of Young. It'll be slightly smaller than the Briggs location over in Tomwater and bigger than the one in Shelton. Um. Eighteen million, I know, sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money. Uh, the portion from us that, where we could show support, um, you see a lot of cities, other cities, municipalities giving out property, um. Given out, um, money, straight money and bonding money. Um, I believe Shelton donated their property, uh, it was part of the schools, I believe they, they said that right. Or I'm saying, think remember right, was part of the schools, um, they donated a bunch of the land for it. That, that building's used not only for recreational activities for the youth and adults, but also has houses, um. Me- medical facility for folks, um, for their, as well as educational features for that medical facility partnerships with the schools. That was discussed here. Um, the other ideas that were kinda just thrown out was, um, same, same type of ideas. Another one was that library bringing that, we would save money by moving them out of the current location over there into this new building. Right now it's costing us at least fifty grand a year or so and, um, either condo dues, repairs, stuff like that. Um, we, we had, we bought the place outright for about a million dollars. Um, that's council decision what to do with it if they take off or if we vacate them from that facility, but, you know, selling that wouldn't be a bad idea. Probably get between one and two million somewhere in there, everybody know a better idea. Um, but that's how much we bought it back then in two thousand ten-ish, I'm assuming, uh, the value went up, a real estate broker, but I would imagine. Uh, that's one possibility we could get some money from that. We also need to consider that we have six hundred and forty acres that we need to figure out what to do. With August, we'll find out more after the, um, the pocket over study, I'm not saying the HCA study. No, not HCA, ACP, it's using time, that conservation plan, thank you. And, uh, we'll know more about how much, um. Pocket over land we need out of that, but basically we will be able to determine more and more what to do with that land here towards the end of this year. Um, that said, we could also sell that land and group a lot of, you know, I think it was valued at seven million or so or six for just for timber alone. But, so there's a good chunk of change that we're probably gonna be falling into for that. That all said, um, there's a couple options I see as feeling in support of this. One is a property where, uh, we would purchase a property and we would, uh, let them do the raising the funds for, for everything else. Um, I think that's a, a good option to take. There's, we could have more input, basically the more money we put into it, the faster it can be built, cause it's not. It doesn't require more time to raise those funds, if we just have a, a pool of money. Um, that said, it's also a lot of money to spend for tax fair, so we need to justify that. Um, I wouldn't be comfortable with more than half myself, and obviously that's a decision for the council, um. But as far as actual city money going into this, um. There is very little that's not. That we can use without a bond, vote of the people. So bonded money and I'm looking at Stephanie, I wanna say is around a million, the key capacity that we have. Um.
That we can take out of the bond?
Without a vote of the people.
Oh.
But it should be somewhere around there, I guess, um, no more than one, four, one, five. I'll, um, we can chat about the, the exact numbers, but somewhere around there. Yeah, but if we do go to vote of the people, we could ask for more. Either way, I think it would be smart if we're gonna be spending money on this, um, more than just a couple hundred thousand. I think it would be prudent to take it to a vote of the people, it's a lot of money. Um, for, for two reasons, one, it gives them the voice at the table, see, you know. I, 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 I very much think that people young do want this, um. But, you know, when it comes down to it, it's, it's gonna be them to decide, in my opinion, it should be them deciding, um, for their tax fair dollars if they wanna spend money towards this. And I would see, uh, like a property tax, uh, it would be nothing near what this last school bond was or anything like that, but, um. Council can decide if, you know, what amount they think that that should be, or if there should be any at all, um, if there should be property tax, blah, blah, blah. So, um, any questions on partnerships? I cared a lot that I just threw out at you, but, um, please, I'll start answering them.
I'm sorry, we kinda.
That's okay. In reference to the bond, uh, cause I, I forget, uh, what year was the discussion, trying to learn more about it and doing some research. It's nice that it could city, uh, but we're not like Seattle where the city is huge. We're a very small city and so, yes, we will have ten thousand people that will benefit from it, but there's also gonna be a large surrounding area that's gonna receive a great benefit from it as well. Um, is there a way that we, if we wanna go to bond route, that we look at? Things like a taxing authority, build a district that, okay, can we do this where we include more than just Young? But a certain area so that we get more buy-in from people and it helps spread to, spread that payment that needs to be done.
Yeah, that's a possibility, you do like a park district.
That's a great suggestion.
And do you, uh, yeah, that's absolute option. Um, it would be more than just, I think, just for the YMCA swimming pool and also have impacts for fields and, um. You know, a lot of our recreational opportunities to that. I think that's a bigger discussion if you wanna have that, which we can, Tia.
As a, if, if, if we can find out, is that a feasible option? That, that, that's the only thing, cause as I say, city of Young, we're not like the city of Seattle where you put a YMCA in city Seattle and Kent's not. People from Kent aren't coming in, people from various outside areas.
I'll chat with Stephanie on what our possibilities are as well as Brett Dilly or Jeremy, see, um, what the boundaries could be for that, um, but yeah, we could have, so that's, uh, something we can consider.
Terry. Uh, you mentioned the word partnership. Is this like a co-ownership with the Y and the city or how does that work? Who owns?
It could, look, look a couple different ways. Uh, we could own the building, we could own the land, they could, we could do a lease for, you know, a twenty-year lease for a dollar or something like that. We could, they could have, um, control and operation of the, the building, um. It's really within the area of how, how far we, what it can look like. I just need to know from council what your appetite is on, um, what you want.
Well, the other thing that I always remember from all those years we talked about is, well, we can build it, it's not that bad, but what about the maintenance? It was always the maintenance, where are we gonna get the money?
Operational costs would moving forward would be for the YMCA. All that stuff, insurance liability is.
Even if they don't own it, no, that's not right, that can't be right.
Um, but it, it can, cause they're assuming liability for the operation of it too, right? So if some kid got injured in swimming pool, i- if we owned the building, we, we'd have some agreement that holds us, um, not liable for any of that stuff. Um, but yeah, we can worry that out.
Okay, yeah. Uh, you mentioned the Briggs YMCA, you know, once called the Briggs.
For the gentleman that spent a bunch of money on it?
No, it's. It was his land, I worked on his house, um. So, I need some clarifications, I don't understand this. Um, how is this not gifting of funds to a corporation? How is that delineated out? Because YMCA is a billion-dollar international corporation. Where we can't give funds to a local business, but we can give it to this corporation, how does that?
I'm sure it'd be just a normal contract, like we have the chamber or anything else, um. We would get services out, not services, they would provide services for the community, um, places for all that. I can get you a direct answer, I don't know the attorney, uh, legally is.
Yeah, and you do that, like, what separates the YMCA, the Y from. You know, some other company that comes in a business that provides services for the city, provides, brings in tax revenue, brings in tourism. Why can't they get the same treatment?
I, I don't know.
The last one, why, why is there, where's this, um, separation?
Yeah, I will get the definition for the, um, the attorney's definition for the, um, gift of, gifting of public funds and what that entails. James, I know you have a question, comments?
Let's, the whole, I'm glad you brought that up and this isn't a dig on you, but. The entire time that I've been in this. Political world, which that I wanted anything to do with me. That term gift of public funds comes up all the time when it's, like I said, this is not directly you, it seems to me it comes up as an excuse. But it's something that someone doesn't want to do or doesn't like. That's my own opinion, so honestly.
A gift of public fund?
Huh?
I am just trying to follow it, that you're saying.
Anytime that I hear from someone, oh, that would be gifting of public funds, this, that, whatever, it is. Very obvious to me in my own perception that it's an excuse because they don't like it or they don't wanna do it. And that's just how I take it. So, me personally, I don't, that doesn't carry any weight with me. Because like as he said. I've heard that term said about something and then literally the exact same scenario happens with a different entity, but there's no problem with it. So. I'm all for, for the Y. But I'm pretty clear that if we're gonna talk about. Tax money paying or any part of it, whether it's property, this, that, whatever, there needs to be a specific benefit to. People that live within city limits, beyond just that there's now a Y. If that means negotiated to where there's never a sign-up bonus if you live within city limits or you have a discounted. Um, membership, be something. If I don't see something like that, then it's just, we're just, here you go. And, I mean, the Y is great. I went to it with my, with my kids for many years, it's a great place, it's an awesome thing. What they can't do is make an argument that they don't have money.
Sounds like we like the Y, but we don't know about how.
No pun intended.
Which, that's your job.
Yeah, you brought a lot of great, um, options and suggestions, I am worried. And although I think that we should keep it to a vote of the people, I don't know if doing it right now is the best time because of what's going on with the school district. And they usually end up choosing one or the other when it comes to an increase of taxes. And that's really important.
You're saying if we say we let them put it on the sixth part of the six forty, it's their building, they're gonna build it, they're going to run it, manage it and pay for it. And all we have to do is donate a parcel of that land?
Part of the partnership, yeah. It would also take a lot of advocacy, advocacy as well, we'd support them on like. It, it wouldn't just be done, like other funding, fundraising is a portion of the, uh, state funding and the capital. Um, you see oftentimes, um, anywhere from one to five million and then requests from, um, and awarded from YMCA's around Washington state in the capital budget. Um, there's federal grants we go after, there's some squally tribe who has expressed interest in, um, help funding it as well, so there's. There's a lot of.
The, the city's part could only be the donation of the parcel of land that we might use, that we already have. So then it would.
The issue of that parcel is there, there won't be access to that for ten, twenty years ago.
Right, probably a little sooner, but yeah, it's gonna be. I think, I don't see it in ten years.
Right.
Um, one, one thing that I do, I, I like the YMCA, uh, I like the capital, um, we can always find a way to capture it. My one fear is when all of a sudden the YMCA is not able to maintain. Because there's either, uh, costs are too high or something like that, that then they all said vacate the building. Who then takes over and? Who then takes over, and because it falls under us, I believe if I remember correctly, then falls to the local municipality. Is the one response for that, and I know we can't afford. The pools, uh, those so-called maintenance, uh, cuz the, uh, from research, from years listening to you and, uh, reaching out and learning about it. The pool, the cheapest part about a pool for a city is the building of it. After that, the maintenance just exponentially goes up because you have insurance, you have to get lifeguard, you have to get all these things for it. My one concern is, there's very few YMCA's that fail, but. It did, that's the one thing that I wanna make sure that we. Make sure we have in the back of our minds when we do start doing this, that we need to be honest to our cat, to our constituents that this is a great thing. There are partners that you're working with, Miss Squali Tribe and things like that, and as you said, yes, the Y takes over the maintenance, but part of that maintenance is because they get dues. They get various things, and if all of a sudden, uh, let's say the econ, uh, I'm not, I don't like to say, look, be getting down around it. But the economy starts even getting worse and worse as time goes on. Those are some of the things that people start giving up first, I don't, I can't afford to go to the Y anymore. It's a great place, but I can't afford to go there, but that, as I said, we need to make sure we're honest about. Down the road, maintenance costs as well.
I was just gonna say, and you can correct me if I wrong from things that we heard in the meeting, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I think, one thing I think that's important to note. Things that I thought of, they talked about how they build these very utilitarian styles, so there's not a lot. I'm not talking about the pool, right, but just the, the general building itself is concrete and steel, I think, and there's, so there's not. You know, you're not talking about a lot of other things to, to fix, I guess. The other thing was, weren't like the medical center and all those, they were paying a hefty rent. Not hefty, but they were paying, uh, uh, paying quite a bit, they're so. You have these other entities in there that tie into it, help offset all of that as well, so that's just something to.
I wanna make sure that we are honest with every, that, with the discussion that it's not just capital. But there's that maintenance, and that maintenance down the line, ten, fifteen years can also become a burden that we go, oops.
Turn it into a new splash pad, right?
Of course, they go under, which they, they, Y usually doesn't, but if they do, um, I'm sure we can just sell it.
No, as I say, it's just one of those things that we, when we have this discussion, I know that that's a small little thing, it rarely happens, but we need to. Make sure that we are aware of that.
Anything else?
As you wanna say, yeah, public pools are really expensive, there's in county health department has a manual, I read it. Because I was interested in building that, I'm like, yeah, no.
So if we go to sell it, we're partners, like, if, you know, they can't just sell the building and it's our property.
Yeah, we'd have to do, uh, when we're putting up the, um, contract and all that, how everything, all the partners work, yeah. But yeah, absolutely, we wouldn't, um, I, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get into a situation where we're. In debt for a lot of money on this, it's, you know, we're either, it's, it's got a pretty contract from, either we provide like property, like. Real value in property, um, or we do like a bond, uh, a vote of the people for a bond, bond. I, I don't think we have the cash to, cash flow to spend three, four, five million dollars, so, right?
I would, if you can get an answer, and if a part of that six forty is viable, I think that's our best option.
What about consideration of if there's a property that's donated, um, at like a. Na- ninety percent discount or something?
Sure.
Donate to the city of the Y.
To the ci- oh, it would probably be to the city. Um, cuz I think it has. Unless they're for sure that they're gonna build, I don't think they can just hold on to that property.
I, I believe also it goes with the fact that they don't really, um, um, they always lease. And properties owned by somebody else, so. City owns the property, and as you say, we lease it for twenty years for one dollar.
Yeah, and if it, it goes under, we could always sell all that stuff as well. Yeah, but absolutely, we can get, um, and get some answers to those questions the council had. We can see what it would look like, uh, financially, what the different options are, um, and bring forth a couple more. I, I think this probably needs for another study session.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what kind of answer you were.
I will say, I'm not. I, I like the idea that we should, if we were gonna do a bond, then we put it up for everyone to vote on. I'm not, I'm not down with adding another tax right now at all.
No, I hear that.
So if we can. The land option is the best for us. Uh, whether it's a piece that's six forty, that is literally just sitting there, and honest, I've said before, it's not our business. I don't think we should own it, but that is what it is. Or if you get someone that donates it for.
Do you know someone that would donate them?
Pennies on the dollar, then cool.
Twelve, was it twelve acres?
Yeah, I think we can get it.
Cuz they talked about the parking was a big thing, it's like Briggs doesn't have.
There's, there's a minimum. They, they, I think eight is what would be nice, some cushion, bigger is more, um, is better, obviously, they can. It, it basically is, they can use all the, um, land that we give, if we give them land, um, if it's ten acres. No, they only need five or six. They do baseball field, stuff like that, this is mainly just for the swimming pool, um, a gym, um. A couple stories, I guess, for other stuff is medical library and all that stuff, but. For the most part, it's kinda like Cory was saying, how it's kind of a bare-bones structure, it's not a super fancy, you know. Huge thing, because they gave us other examples all up and down the I five corridor, and somewhere, you know. Fifty, hundred million dollars, you know, for a huge, huge building, that's something that we, we never see, uh, or use, so that. It sounds can be as fancy, but it's gonna be very functional and, um, and practical there.
I thought you were gonna say you could always use the building for something else, but Y couldn't manage it. They built it like a generic building. Anything else? Okay.
So.
So, reader, oh, here's another one.
If you gotta go that way, good luck.
So, um, I guess only this one, since council had it last time, uh, there's been council members that put it on social media asking, you know. Um, I'm soon to be, talk to other people as well, so now we're just back to square one, asking if you. No, nose goes.
No, I'm, I'm interested to hear what the community's been saying, because. We, if I remember correct, it's twenty-five thousand dollars that's set up to the side for a reader board. Uh, what was the cost that you guys could do it on your own?
Around seven to ten thousand.
Right, certainly ten thousand. And, as I said. I, I, for me, with the reader board. One, what's the purpose of it? If the purpose is to put out what's happening within the city, to advertise what's going on with the city. Once again, I'm going to ask, not with traffic tonight, but on a normal night, can somebody tell me what the southward? Young High, Young Middle School, and the chamber reader boards, what all did they say was going on? And if nobody can answer that.
Time and temp.
Time and temp, okay.
Tell you that.
The purpose of this reader board is to inform the community of what's going on. To include, uh, barbecue rally, the various rec things, the planning commission meetings, the art commission meetings, all these things that are going on. Can we take that twenty-five thousand? And try a single sheet of paper in the monthly water bill, because you're gonna say, hey, it's out there electronically. I'm going to tell you what's out there electronically about the city of Yell. For the city of Yell newsletters and updates. And I subscribe to it, and I'm a city council member, the only thing I get from that subscription is. Here's the city council meeting, or here's a study session, here's the minutes, that's it, uh, let's take a look at what's going on with inside the city. The most recent one is October twenty-twenty-one. We're in twenty-twenty-three. As I said, I subscribe to this, I've been subscribing to it for a couple of years. The only thing I get is, here's the city council meeting, not upcoming barbecue rally. Upcoming arts commission meeting, upcoming town hall, upcoming various activities. If you're gonna say, well, there's social media, I will share that I deactivated my Facebook account a while back. Personal reasons and everything else like that, I deactivated it. I have no clue what's going on in the city. I have no clue, I can go to the Squalidale News, and again, I still have no clue what's going on within the city, so. What I ask is if the purpose of the reader board is to inform our residents, what their tax dollars are going for. What's happening in their community? Maybe we should need to try what other communities out there do. A newsletter that goes out once a month, it can be a very simple thing, it could be a headline, here's what's going on, go to the following link. And then somebody can go to the link and get more information. But, as I say, I, that's my view and references reader board. Because if it's the, as I said, purposes for that, what's going on in Southward, Young High, Chamber of Commerce, and the middle school.
And there's a new board I just saw as I was driving in the.
That's the torn one, isn't it? Reader board anymore, if there's a wind sculpture to my left. Just to consider, just to consider, if that's the location, I'm just saying, because I, I, I would be distracted. I do actually read the reader board, I do. But then, if I saw something over here moving, and I thought, oh, cool.
Unless we have some graphics.
Unless some said reader board, hey, look at the wind sculpture.
Okay, so, I wanna get back to your point, cuz you know I always, I, I don't read them. I will be told, I'm one of the ones that put it out on social media, and it was about fifty-fifty. I got people saying, yeah, I think they're great, I know some people really rely on them, but I still. Don't necessarily agree with you, because I think people can go out and find the information if they need to, I really do. And I can tell you that if I got, well, we've talked about it, the majority of people don't get a paper bill, I think we just determined that. But if they mailed something, whatever the cost is, I mean, to me, I'm gonna think it's junk mail. Sorry, city, I mean, I was gonna toss it. Would you say they weren't forgiven? Anyway.
What about the email list?
Yeah, or, or an email list, I don't know, I just.
I would be happy about the email, but I've been subscribing to the city of Yell since about two thousand eight. We got new, there's a new website.
Yeah, are you, I mean.
No, no, what I just read to you is the current city of Yell website, and how I got to.
Lynn seems to think that there's more to that.
That's not the current.
How I got to is I went to the. Welcome to Yell, private period, that is the opening webpage, I go, okay, uh, there's the agendas and minutes, city of Yell budget information.
Yell dot com is where I was saying.
Yeah, you're on the right.
Uh, you subscribe to city newsletter, oh, hey, I wanna see what's going on in the city. Inside the city, October twenty-twenty-one.
Well, that was before Lynn started.
I don't think he's digging on Lynn.
Oh, there it is, Brian, news and announcements, you just scroll down, scroll down, scroll, dude.
Like, I don't.
Cuz I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the family, the two parent working family that has their kids. That both parents come home. Six o'clock, seven o'clock, first thing you do is you gotta make dinner, get the kids fed, help them with their homework. Maybe spend a little bit, bit of time, and. And I'm tired, let's just go to bed, it's, if we're gonna push out, if we're gonna be pushing a notification, our email doesn't even update. You know, for somebody who says, hey, I'll subscribe, and, oh, hey, I got my weekly newsletter from the city. You know, a- as I say, I'm just, I, I, and. Lynn, thank you for pointing out, scroll down a little bit further, but as I said, I, I got down to you, no, subscribe to city newsletter, and I quit on that, and I went, let's see what's going on with the city in. October twenty-twenty-one, so, I appreciate you telling me to go a little bit further down.
And we've already budgeted for this, or no, I can't. I mean, I can't even remember anymore, yeah. No, 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 it doesn't, I like, uh, his idea better, anyway, all right, who else?
If I remember right, I'm pretty sure the both of us pushed for that exact same thing. Three years ago.
What?
About sticking another piece of paper in the water bill to get information out. And I'm remembering the exact same reaction from the mayor at that point. The, the point. We're already sending out water bill. It can't cost that much money to print one more piece, I didn't say, there's no, what, two thousand?
We did it the math last time.
How many people are getting water bills again, do you remember?
I don't remember ever getting an answer to how much it would cost.
I don't look at it, cuz it's on our draft, so.
There's no reason we can't do all three, have a reading board. In the mailer, and, and have an email, I understand on the website, you scroll down, it has the eventual average. Ninety-nine percent of this town is not going on the city's email, or the city's website, they're not.
We should do.
Facebook posts and all that stuff, get, I think we should get back to having the newsletter. Where you have a paper form that's printed out and send it out with the water bills that are mailed out. And a, a digital form that you can have, that people can subscribe to on, on their email, again.
Do all three, we have a monument there, monument set up, it costs us money.
Twenty-five grand's gonna pay for all of it for at least a couple of years.
Guys, the monuments there, we have a less expensive way of doing it, so let's just throw it out, maybe you have the wording slower, so that there's more time to read things. But you might as well.
We have to pay attention to it first, when Holly talks to that, I'm like, there's probably like three reading boards a town.
Oh, yeah, you went out.
And then I went, I was on my drive to the job site, I'm like, okay, well, let, let me count, I'm here at Timberland, I'm taking a left down Main Drag. From Timberland Bank to, uh, Four Corners, you know, past Jason's, there were twelve. I counted all my, I'm looking for reader boards, I'm looking for these jokers, cuz there's no way. I was like twelve, I was like, man, I'm gonna have to bet money on this, cuz I would lock.
If everybody has, we can have one too.
But they don't get seen. In subconscious, you don't see them. And like the chamber, the only reason I know that chamber is time and temp, and there's a home shop coming up, is because I walked by it.
And I know Tim's.
Eight and a half by eleven flyer. And three thousand one hundred and fifty-three bills would be about three hundred and fifty dollars.
A month, or?
We send our bills out the last day of the month, we don't do it, a vendor does it. That flyer has to be the vendor three weeks before the mail out.
And was that a month, three fifty a month?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm just saying, by the time they get the information, I mean, we're gonna have to, somebody assigned to make sure the information that goes out. Is for the next one.
Yeah, the timing would be all weird on that.
That's fine, that's not, that shouldn't be, we, we know when our, our meetings are, a year out. We know when, when the meeting's gonna happen in May of twenty thirty-seven.
But you're talking about other community events.
We know when the community events are happening months, months ahead of time. If there's one that, if one's planned last minute, well, you're, so well.
So we would need to know what information went out, we have to assign somebody to.
But what you're saying is, there's a labor, there's a labor cost in addition to the three hundred and fifty dollars, there's a labor cost for whoever would, yeah, okay.
Yeah, cuz there's some static stuff that stays up there for a long time, like, on, on our TVs in here, we have stuff that stay there longer time. There's, um, things for, for events.
But it's much more user-friendly, I mean, Lynn just does it right away, right? You've got a new event. If we don't do that, what are we gonna do, take the monument down, throw it away, what do we do? Monument where the reader board is.
Yeah, we would probably just leave it.
Build some art around it. Built some art around it.
Okay, so getting back, what, what are we discussing tonight, just?
Do you want us to proceed with the read one, or do you not want us to proceed with it? Just do it. Is there anyone that's really supportive on it? James, you want to?
Do all three of those things, and I'll vote yes on it.
And here are no's, and I'm hearing yeses.
I'm gonna say yes because of the way that people responded to my poll on Facebook, it was about fifty fifty, so.
Question for Cody about that.
Actually, how are you feeling about it?
If I, what they get, it would be for the cheap. Not the thousands of dollars, cause I don't like the placement.
So now? I, 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 for, as I said, the purpose is to inform the community. I think we need to be a little more proactive on it, and show that.
So I'm getting a no, or no?
Yes, yes, yes.
Said all three. No, unless it's all three.
It's not that difficult. I don't know why there's been so much.
The only concern I have is Young's own cost or staff, I, I think it's gonna be more than this. It, it's gonna require a lot, not a lot, but some additional work for staff to do it. Getting it, logistics is actually doing it, I think it's gonna be a, a bit, um.
I think, what does Olympia do?
Yeah, they also have hundreds and. The cost.
Single file.
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
Even when Lynn's. Come up with that fire once a month.
We're gonna, we're gonna see how much it costs. As far as the TV, uh, reader board, I think we'll move forward with that, and we'll have a discussion on it, and if council wants to vote it down, they can do so.
I wanna say a question with Cody about that. How's that, how's a big screen TV allowed in CBD? Yes, as a reader board. Yeah, how can that be allowed in the CBD, because we very strict on paint colors. But having a graphic big screen TV is okay?
Yeah, Cody, you wanna explain?
Yeah, so you, when you have a fifteen word, this sign already there, this is non-conformity, you're replacing the sign with something that equal, they wouldn't be able to put movie tags. They couldn't play movies on the sign, but you could have some fill picture broadcasted through. That is allowed to have fill picture broadcasted through the TV, that's the plan, is have it like slide share, that's the going. Of, you know, the council meeting playing, and people are like, oh, watching the council meeting, it's gonna be shut down.
Okay, similar use.
Yeah.
Change the sign code. Yeah.
We can watch us actively in their meetings.
Parents and things like that, and a big screen TV does not.
Yeah, it's not the meme, the trans, like how it shows out, it's the actual what it is, sign that's being repaired with something that like value, like someone repairs their chain link fence in the CBD, they have, they don't have to change their chain link fence if you're repairing their current chain fence. Is equal of what it is.
Okay, Todd.
So this doesn't have to go back to council for a vote, because the money's already been approved through budget, we just agreed to come to council before we agreed to spend any of it.
It does have to, council, he said so.
It doesn't have to technically, but I said so, so we are. That wasn't a state. Say on here. Let's do it, we're doing it, but I think it's important to get council buying on it, so that's why we did it. But yeah, we'll take it up for, well, well, either way, I think we will tee it up for a vote. Um, move, move forward with it, if council wants to vote it down, then we're happy to, but it'll put a little kind of a, an alley on it, so we'll know.
Oh, Cody, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm, I'm worried, because we send out a newsletter every month, are you guys not getting that newsletter we send out every month?
I do, I love my talk.
And so I, I, we do send out. The what?
The email?
Yeah, the email newsletter we send out to you guys, or I say it sounds like you guys didn't get any, so I make sure. People in public, it's public works. Uh, the newspaper does give, we send it to the nation, we go send it to the broad public.
Alright, anything else on the reader?
Yes.
Does a, a reader board not help those that are not part of the community be informed when they're driving through, or to improve the tourist effect of, of, of communities events that, I wanna come and see that, but I might be in the next door town.
Thank you. I felt something coming from you, but okay, I'm moving on. Regional Housing Council, enter local agreement amendments.
Mr. Stansel, we're gonna discuss this.
Good job, just a little summary sheet here of what is this, to help history. Uh, we got here and where we're going. Brian serves as our representative on the board, this council, so he'll be able to help answer some questions as well. So this will come to council along with the reader board.
Not in the same.
So, uh, the Regional Housing Council created in, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, we signed it on to the original agreement, I'm sorry, amendment number one in April of twenty twenty-one. Because our city is, uh, five percent population are larger within Thurston County. Uh, we have a seat on the board, which is why Brian represents, uh, basically all the southers, can you say that right, Brian?
I, I represent Young, but, uh, for some reason.
And so, uh, the RCW is eighty-two, fourteen, five, thirty, sixty-seven, twenty-eight, one eighty. We pay one tenth to one percent sales tax, Stephanie, is that right? Automatically, uh, goes to, uh, to fund, uh, the Regional Housing Council. So, a- as you see the listed changes, this is amendment number two. As I said, amendment number one was back in April of twenty twenty-one. And I know Brian, he lost city council meeting, mentioned a few of the amendments, uh, that were coming down to just bring up the language. Um, and add a couple advisory boards, and so, uh, this has to come to council and be signed by the mayor. And in order to proceed, go ahead, Brian.
And if I remember correctly, we're signed on because we wanted to join the bigger pot of money, cause I believe there's another community that, uh, this tax, the revenue that's directed. We could go, nope, we don't wanna be part of it, but then we have to use that funding. And we have to manage it ourselves, which means we don't get, we might not get the assistance of the other ones with the bigger part of money. And I think there's another community, uh, things tonight, uh, is also, but they chose, we don't want to be part of this, we will.
The tax that you're discussing.
Right, but it's the, um, but there, it's the, that's why we're part of this, because that, there's that funding that's going in. And if we're not part of it, then I believe we have to do the services ourselves. Cause I asked that question, I remember I asked that question, uh, uh, meaning, they said that.
We have to pay it one way or the other.
Right, but we.
We have to pay him with this group, not the tax.
I know it's not, so Teneno might have had a different option, because of how small they are.
I just wanted to make sure that there was clarity on that, on why, and so this is important, cause we don't sign on it. The money's going, but we don't.
Right, we're not, we're not a part of this, we just don't have a seat at the table, but our money still goes to this little fund, I mean. Yeah, so according to this, we, we at least have a, a seat and a voice at the table to help direct these funds if we can.
I don't think necessarily we're kicked off if we don't, uh, agree with the amendment, we could vote against amendments, or, or be on it. I, I, I don't know exactly, actually, I shouldn't say that.
Cause I was on it before Brian, and I know they were really pushing for us to, um, cause I remember I brought it up, uh, Mayor Foster before.
I, I read you, it doesn't look like it's anything too crazy or anything.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm reading this right, this should be dead in the water. Number four is saying that it requires the Board of Commissioners to not deviate from the recommendation by them. So when they make the recommendation, and it goes to the county commissioners, it's saying that the county commissioners have to go along with whatever they say, is that what that's saying? They should be dead in the water before it even hits anything.
They could vote, yeah, so my understanding is they, Board of County Commissioners could vote no on a proposal, and then instead what they're saying is Board of County Commissioners can't redirect that somewhere else at their own choosing, that's to come to the recommendation from the council, is that right, Brian? That way you read that?
Well, let's say that the, the county commissioners couldn't get a recommendation. And they can't alter it, they can't change it, still not. That's why they're there. That's like us. All due respect, that would be like us in here making a decision, that we have a committee come in here and say, you have to do it the way we say it.
We're our own entity, though.
And so is, so is the county commissioners.
Oh, there are partners in this one, though, um, it includes Olympia, Lacey, Thursey, Young, and Thurston County as signatories on this agreement.
No, I don't, I don't, so, this Regional Housing Council, that is the equivalent of a city committee. Them, they're making. Let's just say that, this is telling the Board, the Board of County Commissioners that they can't change the recommendation brought to them.
Yeah, from all these jurisdictions, jurisdictions, it'd be like all the it's like them saying, we know better than you on how to direct this money, even though this is what this group decides, even though we're part of this group, we're gonna have verdict. Let's say they wanna build a, um, a motel for homeless, let's say, and this is what the recommendation is, and then the board says, eh, we like the twenty million that's going towards that, but we're gonna put that twenty million towards, um, tiny houses, let's say, instead, we think that's a better.
That's why the.
They can't do.
Commissioners are there.
To overturn?
We get elected on city council to vote and make decisions. The county commissioners, we're making decisions at city level, county commissioners making decisions at the county level. This is a county level committee, making recommendations for county's budget.
Regional, all these jurisdictions.
County, it's regional, and the reason why they want, why, uh, county board is on a, is on agreement with that, hey, we do this, is because the Regional Housing Commission has their own staff that goes through and comes up with the proposal of this is the best way to spend the money, this is they have the technicians that are going out there and talking to the homeless, they have the people who are doing that, the county has nobody that's doing that. There is no department that's doing that, as efficiently as the Regional Housing Commission has their partners doing it. And when they come up and they say, hey, this is what we're going to do, this is how the money that's been collected is going to be spent. They've already gone through the experts there, and they wanted to make sure it was not a political decision at the end of, no, we don't like that idea, and we prefer to do something else. As the example was, that might be more cost effective, uh, let's go buy this motel, let's buy this motel, let's refurbish them, and somebody else come and they you have a county board that says, no, we want tiny homes, and it's like but our experts just went out there and they just found the best way to do it.
I agree with all that, but county does also have experts on that.
Yeah, they have their own housing authority that's a part of the Regional Housing Council, so every city has a voice at the table, including Thurston County. So part of the recommendation is coming from the Thurston County Board as well, it's not like Thurston County is in the dark, and this group is proposing something that county's not a part of.
Right, it's just, yeah, it's just the three, uh, five now, um, commissioners say, we want this for a specific I don't regardless of if that commissioner who's on that board says this agrees with it, and they might not agree with it, but the, I, I, I don't see it as a bad thing, it just allows, gives us more strength, i- i- city of Young against the county. Same with any other jurisdictions, but it just doesn't, why have this group, Thurston County can just do whatever they want.
I'm not saying that, um, but at the end of the day, county commissioners should be able to make alterations to it. The whole, the point of the group is to have all these cities and the county together in that committee, talking about it, finding a way.
Agreed.
And then passing that forward.
And if they, and after that group decides that, whatever decision that is, the county can say, no, I don't like that, do it a different way. That's what this prevents.
So that thing too, just to, to reiterate is. It's all of our money as well, so it's the county's money, Olympia's money, Lacey's money, Young's money, so we're all paying into this. So if we're all paying into this, but the county goes, no, we're gonna use it for this, then city of Young didn't agree upon, we're not gonna be okay with that. You know what I mean, so if you give the example, we want tiny homes instead of a hotel. And, and, and Young and Olympia are going, whoa, we didn't vote for that, like that's our money, you don't get to just spend it where you want it. So I think that's, that's how I would interpret that piece there, is they can't just go rogue and use our money how they feel fit, that this group makes that right.
Alright, they can just, uh, air and nae it, but they can't adjust where the money goes, it just seems weird.
Yeah, I don't know why they haven't in there, if that's happened in the past, it might have, um, it's very, very well could have for the county.
My guess is the, the cities that are on board or a part of this probably didn't want that power to be given. At the end of the day, would be my guess, uh, based on the history of these cities playing together in previous end picks.
I'll keep my thoughts.
Better to have a seat at the table than a test case.
Well, I think we should have a seat at the table, I don't think, I don't know how much weight our seat has. Members of that table, but that seems to me that I mean, let's, let's kill the elephant in the room real quick, you basically have four liberal seats there and one kind of conservative one. That, to me, what I, when I read number four right there, is that is hedging the bet in case the Board of County Commissioners were to flip to a more conservative weight.
I, I don't think so, I mean.
That's how, I'm just telling you, that's why.
If you wanna.
Bird's eye view of, of that.
If, if you wanted to go down that route, Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater would still have the votes. Regardless of, um, Young and Thurston County, if that happened, I, I, I don't think that's, I mean.
No, I. All, all they're trying to do is become a little bit more independent, to spend the money appropriately, without having you know, as I said, they have their expert, they have the whole thing, they've got people that are vested, um. In a lot of ways, a lot more than they, they pooled everybody together.
But that's an unelected board, they shouldn't have a top.
Um, they're not, every one of these is elected.
They're, they're elected representatives, but they weren't, they weren't, people didn't elect them into this position, they're appointed.
Correct, they're elected by people their jurisdiction.
So, th- the Board of Commissioners, they can just, they still have the power to say yes or no, at least, right?
I don't know about that.
That's.
Why would it go before them if they're doing?
Cause they're the probably the ones that have to, yeah, they are the ones that, um, that control the money and distribute it out. So, at some point, it goes into their pockets to, to make happen, like whatever project. But it just, it's just like.
That's right, it sounds like, you, you can't take this money from here and use it over here, is how I read it, that you can't deviate. We save this money for this, you say you have to know, but you can't say, we're gonna take that money and go elsewhere, is that how it's?
I, they can't deviate, I don't think they, they can, if this is what the body, including them says you have to do, like build this hotel, all these jurisdictions voted, three out of five. Thurston County, yeah, we're not gonna do it, um, I, I don't think that's the.
I believe what it is, is, uh, the funding that is pulled from each city goes to the county to manage that funding. And therefore, I think is why, that's why it has to go in front of the county commissioners, cause it still is in their fund to allocate that money. So, this board comes forth, recommends where the money goes, they can't say, no, we don't like it, we want it to go here, but they could say, and we want more detail, we want more. They can't say, no, we don't like it, we want it to go here, but they could say, and we want more detail, we want more information, right, just like we do here. But they control those funds, the money's funneled through the county this.
Good explanation.
Anything else?
So that will come on, is that the next?
We're gonna try to, yeah, we're gonna put it in for next Tuesday, unless you guys have any additional question for me.
That one's sufficient.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you the.
I know, I, I agree, we'll do our due diligence on it, make sure it's not. What?
I think, yeah, whether or not they had the up or down vote on that and just.
Yeah, the county for four.
Yeah, some background on it.
Just to, the, the also, the other reason that you can consider this is, if you notice Thurston County has representative there. If that's no good, all of a sudden have a vote go where it goes for one, one says no, but four cities say yes. And it goes, and it gets passed, and it gets up to the county board, and the county board turns and goes, yeah, we said no. It, it, then why bother?
Are the Board of Commissioners on that?
Yeah, there's, yeah, one of them sits on, just like one of the city, one of the elected representatives of the city sits on it.
So just because one Board of Commissioner came to agree and thought it was a good idea, but now four others may not. It's just like here, when one of us is sitting on another committee. And, and part of those negotiations and, and discussions and, and forms of opinion and votes that way, that doesn't mean the rest of us agree with that vote.
It should.
No, it did, no, it shouldn't.
Hopefully you're not taking your own actions and acting on behalf of the city, with your own personal beliefs rather than what the city believes.
What are we talking, what do you mean?
You're acting on the best interest of the county, just like if you're representing it, um, whatever committee you're on. You're representing the city, you're not representing yourself on this, how you feel, you would vote on it, it's how the city would vote on it. The best interest of the city, not the individual.
I disagree, wholeheartedly. That's why you're, you're on the committees that you are.
Sure, I look at your face, that's, I, I don't think that's what you should be doing.
Here's the, the chair from one of mine right now, and I've been pretty open and fair and trying. Even though like I hold the views that I have. Am I in there trying to stand in the way of doing anything?
Not at all, he's been really compliant.
Yeah, so you're doing what the city.
I'm not, I'm not talking about my interests.
What, what's the point of that one?
The, the point is, we're, we're seven different people, just be, we're not all gonna agree on everything. So whatever committees you are, I mean, obviously, you're there, take all the information in, disseminate it. And come to an opinion and vote that way. None of us job is to be on a committee and vote the way that we think everyone else is supposed to.
But you should vote the interest of the city first.
We are not here in the interest of the city, we are here for the interest of everyone that lives here.
The city.
No, there is a very distinct difference, the people that live here and, and the entity of the city are two very separate things.
So the people that vote you in is not the city then?
No.
Okay, fair enough.
The city.
Sam, I think you're saying the same thing, but you're getting hung up on the word, I think.
It's very important, just like.
No, you're right.
This other word in here, but I'm.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I get, I think there's, I kinda think you're saying the same thing, but it's the definition of the word.
Yeah, I think James represents the people of Yell very well.
Yes, that's, yes.
Being said.
That's right, I like that you sweat the small things, so you look into the small things.
Absolutely, I didn't see that until you mentioned this, thank you.
Yeah, I read it real quick, so it's okay.
Okay, are we moving on? I guess, yes, no.
Too long time.
Homeless Task Force. Yes, and so I have a fairly quick presentation, if we could get them, P V on. I don't have any pieces of paper to get you off thinking trees.
Only see.
Oh, is that what I'm doing, darn it?
There's more trees going out than it was a hundred years ago.
You need a pen for the information that we send out, yeah.
Do you know a young, geared tree accepts more bourbon than.
That makes sense.
I use it, it's not.
Okay, no, I need to click present. All right. Okay, I come to you with encouraging news from the Yell Homelessness Task Force. December twenty twenty-two, the task force met with Mia's chair, Blair's vice chair, Crossman's counselor. Deb Larson, representing level bounds here, and Leila Cardenas from host. Collectively, we reached the conclusion that the former task force had served its purpose and a committee should be created. Homeless numbers are growing and no more work lies ahead to ensure residents get the support and best chance to being successful retaining a roof over their heads. All right, so the suggestion is that we have five members with a term length of four years. The appointing authority being the mayor and the council confirming, just like any other one, nothing special, it's exactly like the other ones. Um, resident requirements are Yell area. And. Okay, I'll just read this exactly, to the extent responsibly possible, the city shall seek representative, representation. On the committee to assure the key elements of the committee are represented, along the groups to be considered are city council member. A specialist in addiction and mental health issues, a representative from a nonprofit that provides services to the homeless. A representative from an organization that creates or sustain low income housing, and then of course, Yell area residents. Those are, um. I didn't put that in there, but that doesn't mean that they can't be on there, we were just saying it needs to be this.
I thought it said it was gonna be on there.
I think I had a question mark by it, but please let me continue and then, yes, thank you. Okay, and the purpose would be to identify areas in which the city may use its resources to coordinate or support services for the homeless population, so not. Um, so coordinate or support services, not, not really beyond that. Which I think is a good blanket, that's my assumption. Okay, so the functions would be to educate ourselves, our community and colleagues about homelessness. Educate on what young organizations are doing and what we can do to support them, and then collaborate and coordinate support. All right, that is the end, what questions do you have?
Brian? Uh, one question, you say young area residents, are you talking about young city residents or young areas, including Lake Lawrence, Clearwood, yeah.
I said area because I didn't want it to be limited to the city.
I mean, fine, I'm answering.
Um, I do think you should have law enforcement on there, and I guess my question was, when you were talking about. The committee, you said, were there five people? I apologize, I don't remember.
Five members at a four-year term, and that is typical for most committees here.
Okay, so when you said residents, other people could be on it, cause that was more than five, wasn't it, or no?
I think it's five, but it implies there'd be more.
So, okay, but, but can you bring that slide? Okay, so you've got a council member, a specialist in addiction, three, well, whatever, I mean. Okay, so my question is, all of those, three of them, the addiction, the representative, nonprofit. So, then the, the, I don't know how else to say this, the. The other side of the voice of what they're probably going to be pushing for would be from a one. From a city council member and a Yell area resident. Is that a question? Yeah, I, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm discussing the makeup, okay? And one, two, three, four, five, so we have, right, so you have. Well, because the S was throwing me in that, and I apologize for that, the S, the S is throwing me, cause I'm thinking, oh, well, you could get a whole bunch of people on there. So you have the potential in that five of. The possibility of two, I don't know how to say this correctly, sounding politically correct, but two versus three. It, you might have a, a different opinion, a different way of looking at things. So it seems a little, I don't know, just seems a little unbalanced to me, anyway.
And sorry, my resolution, council approved resolution, um, six hundred and thirteen in April of twenty twenty-one, um. Bring in the boards and commissioners and unify them, so they are all, so they, they all have five members, and that was offered by council. So I think, and I was talking to Ashley about this, is it says to the extent reasonably possible. So there may not always be those exact representatives on there, but you know, to try to get a diverse group, I think would be intense.
Yeah.
Behind that is to, um, and then if those specialists and representatives from those groups weren't available, you know, that, that would be citizens. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but I think the intent was that, and try to get as many of those people as possible, and then Yell resident. You know, people in the area now would.
Okay.
You know, that would apply to be on there.
So, but five is, is five a limit, is that a limit?
Five is the number of, um.
That we.
On each convention or commission.
Okay, so if you did add a, like I mentioned, the law enforcement, I think it would be important for them to be on this. Then that would take away from one of those, it's, it's all in, you couldn't have six necessarily, or.
Boarding commission does have a city liaison.
Okay. Thank you, okay.
Cause then they can still bring that, the very important piece of information, yes. Yes, I don't want you to think that I didn't find that important, it was these ones. Cause we had other really great ideas, but this is what I brought today. Would you like me to read that?
Okay, the reason why is, um, when you're talking about the makeup, you just talked about what's on the regional housing.
Oh.
Yeah, those are the tech people, the people that are going out there, that's the regional housing commission, they have those elements in it. And so I wanted to find out, make sure we were not doing another purpose. If I could, if you're looking at trying to do that, that maybe what could be, do like what the other cities have. Where it's just not me sitting there, but I also have other people, uh, there's elements from. Um, for the other cities, they bring in people from planning commission. Very cool, um, they bring in people in that are part of the city administration, that are part of the city itself, that are the tech people that. Come in and they are kinda like going, okay, yes, let me see what's going on. When I sit in the meetings, it's myself from Yell, everybody else has got like this staff sitting behind them. And it's only the board members that are doing the vote, but the others are bringing, are doing input. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we weren't, you weren't doing a double thing, so I wanted to bring that to your attention, right, that's why I wanted to bring to the attention of. If the purpose of the committee is resources, which resources? We're talking about because, as I say, the regional housing commission is also looking at the resources of what of everybody there, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Um, Terry had her hand in.
Uh, yeah, my question is, how is this different from the last task force that we had? And haven't we already identified the purpose of prior?
Yes, please.
The intention is focusing locally, so the representatives from organizations are meant to be ones that are operating here. Specifically, level bounds are.
But they already come here, right?
Correct, but what this is doing is creating a committee where those people. This group are getting together, talking about issues specific to here, and what it is that they are doing, whether it be. Operating the emergency shelter, um, or. They're looking to actually build a shelter or something like that, or whatever it is that they're doing to help people. And they've identified what they need help with, to, and what they need in order to do what they're doing. And they come to this committee and they discuss it together, and then they bring that to council and say, this is what we wanna do, this is what we needed. In order to help us do it, whether that be, we need a couple thousand bucks this year to pay for bond. People to staff the emergency, um, shelter or whatever it is. That's the point of this, is to have that centralized body, where they're discussing what's going on specifically here. And when they bring that to council, to say, this is what we need, this is what we want, this is what we're gonna do with it, this X, Y, Z.
Does that include the committee going out to the people we know that are homeless? Because last couple of meetings we had, we knew everybody by name.
The point, the point of this is that the city is not doing, we're not doing it.
Okay.
Because the city in, in no, is no good at it. Every other city in the state, country, and everywhere else has proved that, if they're the one spearheading handling homelessness, it's a total failure. Every time, and all they do is blow money.
Fund it, we're gonna fund what they ask for, pretend, potentially, yes.
There's no.
I understand.
There's no, uh, obligation or anything like, it's just, it's the groups out there that are actually doing stuff. And actually doing stuff that is working and matters, it's, the point is for them to be able to come here.
To a body and get what they.
Say, hey, this is what we're doing, this is what we wanna do, this is what we need to do it. That's it, that's all that this is meant.
Okay, thank you.
Because the organizations operating in Yell right now, they're doing fantastic, they, and I'm not saying they need just financial support, just.
Support and acknowledge. Showing up and they know where to get the help. Because a lot of times, they, we've had the community center open, and I understand that not many people come, cause they don't know, they're somewhere else. In there, they don't have a cell phone or whatever, they don't know where to get help. So, but it's up to the groups to bridge that gap, is what you're saying. And come to the table here with anything that they need to the committee, to the committee.
Yes, and then to answer your question more, the difference between the task force and the proposed committee is the task force. Or it, it served its purpose, and, and its purpose was to identify what homelessness looks like in Yell. And what we're currently doing to fix it.
And remember the public meetings that we had.
Yes, so we won't have those anymore.
But constituents spoke their, their feelings about everything.
It's welcome.
Yeah, but they gave, gave us really strong, we're not going, we're not doing what they didn't want, so. But that's something to keep in mind, when, when and if they come and ask for funds, that we have to remember that, yeah, who we're representing.
Right, yeah.
Very, very good, thank you.
I hope I answered all your questions, and I really enjoy being a part of the homelessness task force and the people that I worked with. Um, and does anybody else have any questions? No, okay, great.
I think the next steps to that is, one of our next upcoming meetings, we'll go and tee this up to council to go and vote and make this an actual committee. Um, yeah, we'll, um, start a plan immediately after.
Mayor's report.
Um, the only thing I wanted to hit on was the, um, puddle situation, clearly. Do you, I don't know if council saw, everyone saw.
He wants a seated table, um, so, uh, subcontractor for a company was doing some directional boring. Um, under Walmart Boulevard and hit a water main that was marked. Um, they were located, they just took so long from the locate to the work that the lines were painted, so they didn't see them. Um, so they hit a water main, the water main burst open, it was a ten-inch main, so it's one of our big ones. Um, so it's some, you know, the subgrade of the road fell apart because it got super drenched and it caused that pothole of them, um. The great news is, because that water main extension we did last year, if you remember, up Walmart Boulevard, no one was out, is without water. So we just simply shut two valves and isolated it, which was really good news, so I did that, but really good news that no one was out water. Um, we opened it up, estimated today in the pot, the hole, we thought it would be just a little, like they just tapped it and poked a hole in it, but they literally took a huge chunk out of that water main. So it's gonna take a little longer to repair, um, we did backfill the area and put, um, some cold patch down, so it's drivable now, it'll be drivable. Um, next week, Wednesday, there's gonna be a bigger equipment coming out, we're gonna have to get some bigger equipment to do the water main repair, cause we can't just band it, we have to get a hole. Um, next week, Wednesday, there's gonna be a bigger equipment coming out, we're gonna have to get some bigger equipment to do the water main repair, because we can't just band it, we have to get a whole section of pipe replaced in there. So we'll do that, um, in conjunction with the subcontractors, and we'll move from there.
Some questions for Cody?
Coming out of the contractor that, that misread the line, correct?
Yeah, so what will end up happening is when we get it, we'll send them the bill for the equipment, we won't send them the bill for our people's time, um, we'll send them both the equipment. Um, there's that pipe, they'll use, they're using their equipment to do all the excavation and everything, so they're digging it up, and they have to repair the road anyways. But of course, that'll happen too, so we'll work in conjunction with them to get all reimbursed for what we use or what we do.
We're gonna make sure it's up to standards DOT.
Yeah, and that'll be the big thing, is it's was dot right away, um, so they'll have requirements for them to repair that road section once it's, kind of the works completed.
Hopefully the temp patch isn't as like McDonald's is.
No, this is, it's a cold patch temp, it's not McDonald's, it's like a layer, and this only can be there for a week, so we did it ourselves, our guys did the temp patch and put it back on there, so. I trust the work, and I drove over it, and I was happy. And we'll keep checking it through the week, if, if you notice it starts upgrading or starts sinking, call me, let me know, we'll get the guys out there to refill, they're gonna keep checking it daily. Because that does, as you ride, it compacts more and put more on it, so we'll do that rest of the week, and there's one other thing on reiterate is. The only benefit was, we were checking Facebook, uh, the mayor and myself, and comes across and tagged me right as I was reading the post. And so I, no one called the city, so I didn't know there was a pothole there, and we're literally leaving work at five thirteen, I think, post him up. And I was like, oh, thank goodness I got tagged, and it's no one called. So please, if you see an emergency like that, call the city, call any emergency lines, we'll get, we'll handle it, it's just no one called any emergency line, so we have no idea.
Yeah, the contractor was working on it that caused the damage, didn't bother to notify the city.
So no, they hit, they hit the pipe and notified the city the pipe was hit, but the road didn't degrade until later that day. It was several hours later when the whole, yeah, so they hit the.
I'm just trying to figure out the people that were working there, that they just kind of went, yeah, let's go.
No, they called us right away and said, we hit a water main, we came out, shut the water main off, we inspected everything, it looked fine, but over time, the road cracked, so.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, initiatives, here we go, Brian. Hey, Ashley. I bring showing my initiative, okay?
I got a couple.
Okay.
Sort of, um.
Pretty city day, maybe?
They all have to do with Cody's, three of them. You can say it, I said, don't move far, um, so, as you saw my post on Facebook, getting lights at Longmire sports fields.
Yeah, we've seen it a couple of times.
I didn't see this, what was going on?
Um, so on my post on Facebook, um, so multiple people had, um, inquired about getting lights at the sports fields at Longmire. Apparently they're not light up and gets dark and they still want to play, and they need more lighting and. I don't know what that entails, if that's something reasonable, has to care for you, hey, you can't let kids stop playing baseball.
So yeah, we actually have looked into this when we were looking at turfing the fields as well, um, it's extremely expensive, it can be done, it just, if council wants to pursue it as something. We would budget for it and do it, it's, we're talking in, to light it, to proper lighting so they could play safely, we're looking at the five hundred thousand dollar range is what we found out. And that would cover the football field and the two upper fields, not the downhill, that was two years ago when we looked into it, it might be more now. Um, and we use the school for their football field, we kind of use that lighting as a basis for how we determine how much ours would cost.
There are some, there are some grants we probably go after, but yeah, it's expensive.
But in, it would make sense to try to, I mean, we went for a grant, um, in twenty twenty one. Yeah, twenty twenty one to try to get, it feels turped and through this federal budget, we didn't get it. But that could be something where we might want to do turfing at the same time, because we're already gonna dig everything up for the trenching of the lights, we could try to be chirping the same time, so it would be a bad idea. But if it's something that every council wants, we can look into it.
Who, who wants turf?
A lot of the sports teams, they can't play my reins a little bit, and when you put, so we're turfing the outfield in the baseball field. Or turfing the field, I played on turf, yeah, so you, it is, but you can play, so you turf the infield in baseball, and they can play no matter what the weather is. So if, right now, if it rains and it gets muddy, they can't play baseball, so you can allow you to play in baseball on infield turf. You're thinking football field, I don't care if a football field is turf, that'd be great too, um, but the infield for baseball, I believe they can play when there's a little bit of rain, whereas right now they have to cancel because it gets muddy.
I played at the rack a decent amount, and it's, yeah, it's just like you said, the ins, in, um, the infield's, um, playable or usable. It's really wet in it.
You can do football too, but there's no need to with all the school football field being turned now.
Baseball always cancel when it rains anyways?
They won't when it's, if there's turf, they don't have to, if there's lightning, there is, there, yeah, if there's like, yeah, the lightning, they would still cancel, or heavy, heavy rain, they would cancel, but light rain. Turf fields are great, you can play on them because they don't get muddy, that's the biggest reason, it puddles mud and the dirt in field, it's just not safe anywhere.
Uh, bathrooms at the park during events, a couple complaints from businesses across the street. That bathrooms, people come over there to use the bathroom, because either the bathrooms aren't. Working, which we've seen, or there's not enough over there, I don't know, so.
Which, which is the city park?
Yes, the city park. So something to keep in mind during these big events, to make sure that we have some point requirement for.
Yeah, so one thing we're requiring in Lynn, we put in that, that people have to bring porta potties when their events get to a certain size, and we have one per thousands. About one porta potty per thousand people that plan at their event, and we didn't have that place before, in addition to ours. So you will have a lot more bathrooms at events, they are all up and running, they're all fixed, they ran, we had them up and running last year. We have our three bathrooms plus the communities in our bathrooms, and then one per thousand. So you're talking one, two, three, four, yeah, five, six, seven, eight, and then one porta potty per thousand after that.
So there's already plenty there. May I ask, what are the current hours of the brown board restrooms at the community center right now?
They're closed, so they, we close the bathrooms outdoors during the winter, we open them April first, so April first, all bathrooms will be open again, and they run from sunup to sundown.
Families are still going to the park and still need to use the restroom.
Yeah, so the issue we had, so specifically like Cochran Park, the bathrooms, they don't, they, we have to run the water access freeze. We get a lot of people camping, so the first thing that happens, and we did it this year, we opened the bathrooms for Thanksgiving, for the gobble, gobble run or something. I opened the bathrooms, there was an event, and it was gobble run. So I opened the bathrooms, and before the event even started, one of the bathrooms locked with someone inside asleep. Like already locked person inside, and that's how it is, and it's, we have to get police to help us get them out, a lot of times they're not very responsive, so. We just don't open them during the night because it causes a huge issue, like, there's always someone, and it immediately happens, and it's frustrating. Um, even during the summer it happens, but it's not as bad, because you're not just trying to take refuge from the cold, and that's what they're doing in the bathroom, so.
Committees for.
City of Yale spring clean. Want to do that again?
Pretty day or?
But it's city days, what we called last year.
Yeah.
Is it not gonna be pretty now?
Well, I like City of Yale spring clean.
That's a lot more, um, flows off the tongue a little bit.
Do you need to do it, but people need to keep, keep it up?
But, um, so you think in May twentieth?
May twentieth will be the date, um, the reason why we picked May twentieth is the twenty seventh is a splash pad opening. And all that, we didn't want to do on the same day, so the twentieth, we did it last year on the twenty first, I think, so it'll be May twentieth, spring cleanup, the dumpsters for every dump, there'll be something that goes out. In their bill. There'll be something to go down in their water bill, um, that's something we do every year, where we say sign up for spring cleaning up, we have done signups electronically. And we've noticed there hasn't been as many people signing up when we did a, like a, what do you call it, a poster saying they had to bring in their turn in, so. Um, we'll, we'll try it again this year, but we always fill up by, you know, about two o'clock anyways.
I tried to spring clean just because that's what you always put on the thing that goes in the water bill. That's always says that on the water bill, let me just see that. That's why it's.
We are saying water bill, yeah, it'll, it'll be in the water, it is in the water.
Oh, yeah.
So yeah, so we promote people to get out there and.
Then after it picks up, they'll keep littering.
Five oh seven, speaking on this line, my impression, that DOT has to clean that off the sides of the road.
Filthy up the road here.
Yeah, going this path where Mill Pond is, right across from Mill Pond, walking the trail, like, oh my goodness.
We all be attached for that.
That is a landfill right down there.
It was being cleaned up over the weekend by a, a single person, I saw a single person in a bed with a truck, yeah.
There is a, fortunately, we kind of talked to Thurston County last year about, um, ownership of, because they technically own the. Yeah, all the way down, I, I, all the way down to where it ends, isn't it, which road that county, Thurston County, the trail.
Yeah, they own the trail from where it's here, where it starts at the five oh seven, the break, and they own it the rest of the way, we own it from the.
It wasn't on the trail, it was off the road.
We are talking with them, though, just.
We're gonna look at the cost, but we don't want to overburden our folks either, but if we can clean up a little bit, our section at least, it makes sense to me. Um, but, yeah.
You guys do walk the trail on a weekly basis to clean that.
States budget, but there's, there's a certain tax that we all pay, and it goes into this pot, but I'm pretty sure all it does is fund like the adopt a spot stuff. So it's the groups that, for that group, that area. So it's not like they're state crews that they send out picking up trash, it's all that money done is funding adopt a spot.
The Rotary is really good at cleaning up, I'd like to say that.
That's one of them.
They're so good.
So the group that the Rotary does, that they're part of that.
The adopt a spot.
Yeah.
Gosh, yeah, we'll work together to get that created, set up, and what you need to know and all that, or what information you want.
You people out there, so, throwing the garbage out, so.
And all those successful things, um, you landed last year, and, um, you spearheaded that, like. There's some other, there's some other city stuff we're gonna be doing, but, um, we'll announce that closer to.
Anything else?
That's it.
I would like to see the fee removed on the veteran banners. The veterans banners that we're doing previously, also, I know it was charged before, I just didn't know. Spaced over it, we're continuing to charge for, I don't think we should charge for it.
Yep, so we, and that's, that's a fair, um, thing to bring up, we charge about eighty-five dollars, I think it is eighty-five. And that's the cost of, um, the actual banner from the, the vendor, I don't know who we go through, I think it's out of, you know, who the vendor actually is. Kathy or Lynn.
It's Jonathan.
But I get the dimensions on that.
If we can do it cheaper somewhere else.
There's a lot of local printers around here.
If you could let me know, like, the material and, like, dimensions of what it actually is, then.
We're only running up against time right now for, um, some, we want to get them up, what, before May, I think was a, was a hope.
Shop local first.
Yeah, we will, uh, it was who the vendor was last time, I think that we used, I think we just copied it last time, but we can absolutely re, relook at it. Um, if council's interested, and I think some are of paying for it completely, the program. We could also look at that, if that's something the council is interested in, otherwise, we can do it at cost. And when I say it's a possible gift to public fund, it's not because it's a program, as long as we do it for, make it available for anyone that wants to. Purchase it, it's not a gift to public funds.
Should be for anyone that. From the Jervet, little Danielle.
Yeah, those, those are. Why does city make money off my service, I'm like, it's probably costs.
Plus they get to keep the flag, right?
Plus they can keep the flag, yeah, after the program.
I, that, that means nothing to me, I just don't think it should be paid for, um, however, the rules need to be made for it, because obviously. Maybe it ends up with more applications, say that have the stipulations of what you have to have. Your DD two fourteen or wherever the hell, and proof that you live within city limits. And it's first come, first served up to X number.
Is that something the council would be interested in doing?
Yeah, yeah, like forty, thirty, twenty year, fifteen year service, you get first data.
Is it only living vets? There.
For like, um, those that volunteer, yeah, and after, I think we do after duty as well, um, the program allows for, who, who does it?
I was gonna say, active duty is still that.
Anything else?
Get cost and, um, we'll bring some forward to the council, yeah. Pretty quick.
Okay, I have nothing, Terry.
I have nothing but a quick question, I forwarded you guys, I got a email from a constituent regarding formally educating. City legal leaders about five G, because I don't really know much about this, and I sent it to Todd, but I just wanted to ask, I know we have the big towers. And I know we don't have the little cells, so do we have five G right now in the city? So we don't need the little cells to make it work. Little cells, you know, the ones they say you have to put every two feet or something, the little ones.
I haven't heard of.
I don't know what they are, but I remember Tammy from planning was telling us about that years ago, there's like multiple small cells, um.
Five Gs in those.
Cody, do you know what I'm talking about? Okay, could you explain what I'm talking about?
They had said that they were gonna try to put little towers on each of the, we'll watch your light towers, the water towers, not water towers, light holes throughout town. And power holes, and so they thought that's how they're gonna use five G, they're able to do the service with a broader thing after that will sell power. So I, as far as I know, I haven't gotten any application to put five G on the PSE towers that are in town, we wouldn't probably see them. Because you wouldn't do the focal party for them, but I haven't seen the application, and apart, I know they installed them on the main cell tower and they're.
So maybe we don't need them at all, okay.
When five G first came, oh, it was the idea is basically I'd have a one, one of those little transponders every twenty, thirty feet.
That's what I mean, yeah, and we were talking about, make them in the shape of birds, so you can't see them with all this wild stuff. Okay, okay, good, 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 that's my, was my only question, no initiatives.
Okay. Sure.
Concerning the.
Thank you for coming. All right.
Thank you for staying.